Good, we are live now. We'll wait for the call of the Chair.
Okay, if we can open this budget meeting. And for the new members, this has been developed over a number of years, and it's, I think, gotten better and better in the sense of organization and the information given to council. And what will happen is, I will chair the meeting, but I'll be turning it over to the treasurer, and the treasurer will take you where we're going in the book, and we'll go through the book in in sections. And I would hope then maybe to take a break around 10:15, 10:30. And traditionally, we have wrapped up around 12 or 12:30. That doesn't mean, if you, if you want to push back a bit or delay, you can. But I was reminded by the clerk that they're getting ready to put the tax bills out and to get notices, so there's some technical issues there. So anyhow, with that, and it's your, it's your first budget. So, welcome. And so I'm going to ask you to make some brief remarks about the capital budget, and then go from there. And then we'll go to the capital budget, and then I'll look for motions if you wish to, to make changes to it. And if you wish to remove any items, you can do that at that time. And if you wish to add any items, you can do it at that time, too, from the unfunded list. And then we also have the Sarnia Legionnaires' requests to deal with on the capital side, which is just to move that forward. So with that, Ms. Q, I'd like to go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. We started the 2023 budget process in June 2022. As you called, the draft budget books were delivered on November 4th and presented to council on November 21st, 2022. The financial staff are here to monitor changes to the 2023 draft budget as the mayor and the council directed. General managers and directors are here to respond to potential questions you may have when you go through the detailed budget, and I'm here to answer the question as well. The draft capital budget expenditures was $44.7 million, which can be identified in the capital and reserve budget book on page one and two. On page three, it shows the unfunded 10-year capital plan. There are a few proposed changes to the 2023 draft capital budget, which are now included in the amended draft capital budget council report on page five to eight in the agenda.
And if anyone has any questions when we're in these sections, and we're we're talking about the yellow book?
Yes, the yellow book, capital and reserve budget book.
And if you do have questions, the time is to do it as well. We're in those sections.
This book, yeah, page one and two. So as a result, these changes will bring 2023 draft capital budget down from $44.7 million to $42.8 million, a decrease of $1.9 million. Thanks, Mayor.
Are there any questions, Council Borough?
Thank you, Your Worship. So where are the changes located in? Like, what books should I be looking at, or what papers?
Okay, on the agenda, on the page five, there's the three item. One is the police service capital budget. The second one is all the all the funds received. The third one is Noom Perry Park.
This is in the report that's separate from the book, correct? Is everyone aware that it's a separate report on the capital budget?
Thank you, Your Worship.
You'd like to continue? And then we can come back if there's any questions? Continue on.
The police capital budget has been decreased by $2.7 million.
This is just on the capital side?
Capital one, right. And the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, this additional fund has been received in December, which after the draft budget is done, the additional fund is $1.48 million. Was there of $722,000 has been used for the road rehabilitation capital budget, and $762,000 has been used to offset the capital contribution from operating budget. And $90,000 has been, is additional request for Noom Perry Park for the bleacher replacement.
Just a technical thing, I need to back up here. Are there any conflicts of interest? Counselor Dennis? Just in general on the budget?
Yes, sir, thank you. My wife is President and CEO of Blue Water Power, so I would have a conflict with anything pertaining to Blue Water Power, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any further, so sorry, please keep going.
So the add up, the net amount change is $1.9 million decrease. Thanks.
Anything else on the capital side you want to mention?
Nope, this is only three items.
Questions from council, any motions? Not, I would, I'd look for a motion on the capital budget. Counselor Burl? Counselor Bushi?
Any discussion?
I will then move forward and call the vote. Sorry, Counselor Dennis.
Motion I'd like to make. Pardon me.
I'm sorry, I've got a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion myself, actually.
Yeah, but I have to deal with the motion on the floor.
Okay, that's fine.
Or, depending what your motion is.
I'd like to speak to the consultant. Make a motion regarding the consultant.
I don't see why you can't speak to that now. Make this an amendment to the, to the motion. The clerk is whispering to me here, perhaps the mover and secondor can withdraw the motion right now, and then we'll deal with Counselor Dennis's motion, then I'll come back for the motion on the capital budget. That's okay with you?
It's okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dennis?
Okay, so pardon me, I'm just my apologies, I'm just wrestling through my pages here. Apologies. Thank you very much. I'd like to move that we cut our consulting fees in half, which would still represent a 50% increase over last year. Consulting fees have tripled since 2022 and increased 20 times over 2019. If I have a secondor, I'd like to offer comments.
Sir, a secondor? Counselor Gillis, go ahead.
Thank you. I've had a long-term problem with the level of consulting fees in our budget. For 2023, these consulting fees, consulting dollars are dramatically higher. They are tripling over 2022 for a total of $3.7 million. We need to stop this gravy train for consultants to save very real cash regardless of which account it comes from. The city is fortunate in that we have attracted talented staff. Staff are far better equipped to determine maiden Sarnia solutions at much slower rates. As such, one of the ways to reduce consulting would be to hire more temporary staff. Let's try bringing in retired professionals on short-term contracts. This could be either former municipal staff or local retired industry and business leaders. Do you know how many temporary retired professionals that $3.7 million buys? An awful lot. And in Sarnia, we are fortunate to have a lot of these retired professionals. In 2022, I was dismayed with a 700% increase over a three-year period. For even further perspective, in 2019, we spent only $160,000 in consulting, and now $3.7 million. A number which, for the record, we just received yesterday after my specific request, a 300% increase from 2022 and over 20 times, or a 2,000 increase from 2019, and yet some are hung up on 11% police budget increase. Are you kidding me? This is very real cash, which is depleting our resources and leaving us less money to spend on other projects. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Counselor Burl.
Yes, I, I would like to know, like, what specific programs we are affecting to just cut everything in half. For example, it's not related to what we do as a city, but, you know, you may want a consultant to do brain surgery. You may not need one to clip your toenails. So I think that it almost should be done on a case-by-case basis, so that we know, as opposed to a blanket. And I thought, also thought I read somewhere that it really won't affect things because quite often the those fees are incorporated in capital projects. So I would like a little more information on what specific, and there may be some where we don't need any professional fees, and maybe others, or we need more, or it is justified. So I would hate to make a blanket policy without sort of a case-by-case knowing what specifically we're, we're dealing with.
I'll let, Siri, I'll always respond to your question, Counselor.
Your Worship, through the members of council, Counselor Burl is correct. We would have to identify, our staff would like to receive direction from council, which projects that council would not like to go forward with, with respect to capital. We don't have the resources in-house to accommodate these projects. In particular, they are specialty projects. When you're building bridges, you want a professional engineer that we don't have in-house, unfortunately, to design and construct the project. It's no different when we built the fire hall last year. You have to do a design, you have to scope it properly, and you have to construct it properly. This is very normal practices within the private and government sector when you come with capital projects. We don't have the resources. These are specialty positions that are required for public facilities and services within our community. As we state, we would love to do as much as we can in-house. We've tried to bring in as many project managers as we can. We try to bring in as many staff as we can, but we only have a budget to deal with. So as a result, we are now asking for some consulting, and this is very normal. This has been going on for years. It's just, has not just started now. Some of these projects are going to be higher some years, some are going to be lower based on the capital projects that are being built. When you build a bridge, the cost is a lot more expensive than building a fire hall. The only way I can explain this is that when you build a brand-new home yourself, you might be a professional in framing, but you're going to hire the professional electrician, the professional plumber, you're going to hire those expertise that you need to build your house. And this is what we're trying to do internally, and this has been a practice for years and years and years. Even if we do go and hire a staff, the long-term legacy of hiring a staff member is way more expensive than hiring a consultant, or it's not even a consultant, it's a professional to oversee this project in their field. It's you're dealing with public infrastructure. We did the same thing with the fire hall that council just approved last year. We hired consultants, we hired professionals to come in, design, scope, and implement. We're doing the same thing right now that council just approved last term for the library up in Bright's Grove. We're designing and scoping it. Council allocated $200,000 to go out, find an architect, someone in that profession to tell us what is required within your service. We don't have, we don't have architects here. We don't have, you know, design engineers on board. So this is part of the program. Unfortunately, it's not unfortunate, it's, it's actually a good thing that you're actually having these expertise come in-house. So this isn't just this year. Next year might drop. Next year might be hired. All depends on which capital and the amount of capital council wants to approve. If council does not want to go ahead with this, please tell us which projects you would like to cancel, and we won't go ahead with that project. You will not be contributing to your reserves, which we feel is very important. Staff has been doing a tremendous job over the past four or five years since I've been here to try and implement and push out as much capital as possible in terms of infrastructure in the community. However, if you don't approve some of these infrastructure projects, you're going to be behind on your infrastructure. It's, it's, I don't want to say it's cut and dry, but it is pretty cut and dry. Either we go ahead with the projects or we don't. We just don't have the expertise and the resources in-house, so I would look for direction, which projects, if we want to go ahead with, to cancel. And my final comment is, to Counselor Burl's comment, you are correct. This does not affect the levy. This has no implications on the levy. These are all reserves and capital funding. So to cut consulting fees, which these are professional services, only affects the project, doesn't affect the 6.5% where we are in the base. Sorry for that long-winded conversation. And we've had this conversation last year at Budget Time. Staff was very clear in terms of the resources. We are not expertise in every field. If you want to go with electric buses, we need professionals to tell us how to run electric buses. We don't have that expertise. If you want us to build bridges, we need expertise to build a public bridge, et cetera, et cetera.
I've got Counselor Gillis, and I've got Counselor Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, and for that very lengthy, good explanation of why you do what you do. But I have to come back to what Counselor Dennis was saying. We are, Sarnia has been built on the oil industry, and during that time, and the creation of that was done with a lot of expertise in the valley and elsewhere, when you look at the other components that we have, that have made up our economy and have made up our city. And as a result, per capita, a few years ago, we had the highest numbers of professional engineers in Canada. That has slipped a little bit, but most of those people that have retired from the plants, that are mechanical engineers, civil engineers, and have an understanding of how to build, how to design, and also how to follow the rules and regulations that are required to build whatever it is we decide to build. So he did mention hiring someone on a temporary basis rather than rehiring or bringing back people to build up, although I do recommend that our engineering department, and I'll get this plugged in now, does need to be built up because we do need to have that expertise in-house so that we can, that we can call on them when we need to, not just on a one-time basis. But in this regard, if you, if you consider taking out some of that money, what it allows you to do is, yes, hire experts on a temporary basis locally that understand the industries that we're talking about in order to get this stuff done. There are going to be instances where you will have to go outside and hire outside consultants for precisely the reason that Mr. Carter said. I, we may not have the expertise even in the city to help us out with that. But I think that there's room and opportunities that we can take money out of the, sorry, not take as much money out of the reserves for consultants, but we might want to use the reserve money for something else.
Counselor Dennis?
So I understand that.
Yeah, I guess what, what really caught my eye was the, the, we went going from 160,000 to 1.3 million, and now 3.7 in such a short period of time. What's it going to be? Again, I don't want to speculate, but where's it going to be next year and the year after? It just seems like we're addicted to consultants or outsourcing or whatever. That, that just concerns me, where we're heading in that direction.
Mr. Carter, please go ahead now. Counselor Bushi?
Your Worship, through the members of council, I'd like to confirm those numbers from two or three years ago. That's my first point. My point again is that it's the number based on the consult, again, the consulting fees is based on the amount of capital and the type of projects we're implementing every year. Could change next year based on council's direction. It could change, if we're only doing 30 million next year in capital instead of 44 million, that number's going to be different. I will bring note, though, the spreadsheet that was provided to council, it shows 9%. Usually when you're dealing with capital projects, you're anywhere between 15 to 20% in terms of external consulting resources that are required to build a project. We're sitting at 9%. That's telling me that we're doing a lot that we can in-house, as much as we can at this rate. So the, and that's at a 9%. So we are trying to manage the projects. It's, the numbers are going to fluctuate every year. It's based on what capital is being approved and what type of capital is being approved for council every year. We provided council a 10-year capital forecast. If this is not part of council's goals and objectives to approve this capital, as I said, all means, we will remove that project and move forward. But this is just part of the process, unfortunately, that we have to do when we build certain projects, and they're going to change. And I will like to reconfirm what the numbers were even for the past 10 years, what we spent on capital consultants. And this is before we had project managers in-house. I'd like to know what we spent, we'll use Centennial Park as a project. I don't know what they spent on that. I wasn't here for that. I'm not trying to say that, but I can guarantee you there was external resources required for big projects such as that. I can continue on, but Your Worship, this is, it's going to fluctuate every year. That's all I can say to that, to those comments. Thank you.
Have a motion, I have Counselor Bushi to speak.
Your Worship, what I've spoken many times about the consultants. And, and I said we're getting expensive spending on a consultant, and why are we doing it? So I'm not, I am in favor, I'm not in favor of the motion. Why I'm not in favor of it, why we won't vote for it, because it's not going to affect the budget. Anything we take from the capital is not going to affect the budget. So why are we doing the motion now? If there's any, any, any cut, you've got a lot of places to cut from the budget, but it's not from the capital.
Anything further before I call the question? The motion's been moved and seconded, and I'll just ask the clerk to read the motion, and we'll record the vote.
Thank you. The motion is that consulting fees are reduced by 50%. Those would be the professional services identified in the report distributed by staff yesterday.
I'll call the question, and ask the clerk to
Record the vote, Your Worship.
Yeah, it automatically will be. I will be doing that through the whole session because of this, right? Counselor Bushi? Well, in the meantime, I think you indicated you're opposed to the motion. Okay, we'll record it that way, and the motion is defeated. Can I go back to Counselor Burl and Counselor Bushi on the the motion to approve the capital budget?
I'm over.
And Counselor Burl, then I'll go to Counselor White and Counselor Gillis.
Thank you, Your Worship. On page nine of the capital budget, there is rubber for progressive auto sales arena, rubber flooring for gate one, $120 million, or $120,000, woo, that's an expensive floor. $120,000. I would like to reallocate those funds. I'd like to make an amendment to reallocate those funds for the Pat Stapleton Arena for any potential dressing room upgrades, as may be determined later this year. I would just like to get it in the budget for this year so that those upgrades could occur.
I did, I think I mentioned to you that once we've dealt with this overall capital budget, I will then turn to you for a direction on the Legionnaire budget, or the Legionnaire request, and get a motion from you?
Yes, if I may, Your Worship, I understand that. My fear is if we don't include this reallocation in the budget, in the capital budget now, then that's automatically pushed to 2024, and I think
Can I ask? Okay, good point. Ms. Forfar, any comments on that, on the timing of this and where it would fit in budget?
Through Your Worship, to members of council, the flooring is, is needed in Passa. It's certainly also needed. We are doing a flooring replacement in Pat Stapleton in the public changing areas, so I think we would want to be specific. Without a scope and a project, the reallocation, we can start with it, but depending on scale and scope of the project, it could be a significant amount more. It might be more helpful to wait until there's direction from council in terms of what they would like to do in the Pat Stapleton Arena.
Counselor White, do you still want to move?
I'll still move forward, and I'll speak to it.
First, secondor, okay. All right, let's deal with the amendment.
I'm sorry, I, I don't, I can't find what he's talking about.
Okay, on page, on the cap, in the capital budget book itself?
Yes.
Page nine, there is
The rubber flooring you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And my suggestion is to reallocate $120,000 to be used at Pat Stapleton Arena during 2023.
But my, I'm sorry, the amount is 100,000. I have in my book. That's my confusion.
Rubber flooring replacement, main hallway, gate one, $120,000.
My book says 100,000.
Deal, can you You heard the discussion there? I guess the motion or amendment is to reallocate the money from the Passa Center to the progressive, and there's dispute about how much money's being reallocated. What's, what's actually in the book for Passa? 100 or 120?
It's 100, $100,000.
Okay, that's on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
120, $120,000.
Whatever's in the, in the book.
Okay, and I'm hearing whispers of, of different numbers here. And I checked Counselor Vanderbergh's, and it says 100,000, and mine says 120,000.
Well, let's go with the spirit of what the motion is, and that's just as easy at this point. It can be adjusted if there's a difference.
Thank you.
All right, so let me deal with the amendment. Those in favor of the amendment, and if the amendment fails, I will then later, after we wrap up the capital budget, go to the Legionnaire request that's in front of you. So, those in favor. Okay, I better record. I said I'd record every vote, so. Those in favor? I'm going to have to hit the buttons there. I'm fine with the hand thing. It's a lot easier. I just better be I don't have anything either. Okay, for the sense of time, otherwise we'll be here at 4 o'clock. All in favor of the amendment? I've got Counselor Dennis, Counselor Pilner, Counselor McRoberts, Counselor Burl, Counselor Gillis, Vanderberg, White, and Bushi. And to be the contrarian, I'm not in favor of the amendment, so I'm guessing the amendment passed. So if we can deal with the main motion?
I have more questions, Your Worship. On page, and again, maybe because they're different books, but on, on page 20, if you look at the summary in the bottom, it shows total expenditures for 2023 of 2 million, but the reserve funding is 2,250. And a similar thing happens on page 22. Expenditures are 200,000, reserve funding is 300,000. Expenditures are two hundred thousand, reserve funding is three hundred thousand. And on page thirty-two, and now there may be others that I haven't seen, but on page thirty-two, the expenditures are seven million, zero eighty-eight, but the funding is seven mil and eight hundred and sixteen thousand. So that's seven hundred and some thousand difference. So that between those three, it's like a million bucks. I'm not sure what the.
Let's get an explanation if we can.
Through the mayor to council, my apology, this is the typo. And basically we use the total expenditure as the funding balance. So I'll make a correction in the final budget book. Sorry for that.
Thanks for that, Counsel Burl.
Sorry, the funding number is the correct number as opposed to the expenditure number.
The expenditure numbers are the final number, the number we use for funding sources.
Puzzled, Counsel Burl.
It is difficult to see why you would have more funding than expenditure, but I mean, I'm not sure why. But if that's the explanation, that's the explanation. It's just a misprint in the books, I guess.
All right, I have we have a capital budget as amended. Anything further before I call that question? Counsel Gillis.
Thank you, your worship. On page thirty-nine, sorry, this report, which is operation budget number one. So this page thirty. Ms. Chi, you put in item number four, OMPF funding. We didn't receive the total amount of OMP funding that we expected. And as a result, it has an increase to the tax levy of point zero three percent. My question is, we may not have received the right amount of OMP funding, OMPF funding, sorry, but we certainly received a robust funding from the OCIF funding.
Hey, Counsel Gillis, I got to ask what this, we're in the capital budget still, so was this it?
Well, this is a draft capital budget amendment. That's what I'm speaking to. So I'm speaking to the reports that have been given to us from Ms. Chi with regard to, if you look at page six of the capital and reserves number one, January tenth, you'll see the full report with regard to the OCIF funding, which Ms. Chi had had alluded to and spoken to of one point forty, sorry, one million, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, six hundred and forty-seven. So I'm confused and maybe Mr. Jackson can speak to this. But if the OMPF funding wasn't as much as was expected, why did we not backfill it with the OCIF or come to an agreement so that we would not be facing an increase to the tax levy of point zero three percent due to underfunding of one amount of monies from the province and an overfunding from another project from the province?
They're the mayor to council, so they're they're the programs in the province are for two different things. And so the OCIF is intended for capital and can only be used for capital. And Jane can explain what the OMPF is for.
Okay, this OCIF funding is kind of a hundred percent to cover the capital projects. And based on this funding is not supposed to offset our operating budget, which means it will not affect our tax levy. And we try to build up our reserve balance to build a financial accretion to kind of meet any unexpected capital expenditures. That's why we use increased our road rehabilitation capital project by seven hundred twenty-two, seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars and of the remaining balance to offset our capital, capital reserve. So we kind of increased our capital reserve balance. That's why it's not, you know, impact any cap, our tax levy.
So would you say that it increases our capital reserve?
Exactly.
Is there any way that we can offset the OMPF funding from taking some money from the reserves to help offset that increase? You said in your report that it's twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollar decrease in funding, which comes, which adds an increase to the tax levy of point zero three percent. So I would like to make a recommendation that we take some money out of our reserves to offset that twenty-one thousand, eight hundred decrease. It's not a huge amount, but it does make, every little bit helps. So I would make an amendment. I don't know if that's a motion or an amendment.
We have a motion on the floor that has been amended, seconded by Counsel Burl. But are we not mixing operating and capital here together?
Through the mayor to council, normally we're not, excuse me, we're not allowed to use the senior, senior government funding grants to offset our operating expenditures.
I understand that, Ms. Chi. But what I'm saying is I would like to take some money out of our reserve, reserves that we have of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred to offset that increase. So not specific to the capital reserve, but our reserves in general.
And which reserve would you be pulling it from?
Probably Operation and Contingency Fund.
Is it, can you second to that, Counsel Burl? It's understood because I want to keep this moving forward here. I'll call the vote. We have the vote recorded. Interest of time, I'm going to do the hand thing until we get this working better. All those in favor of the amendment? And those opposed, so once again, it's the amendment passed. I oppose the amendment. So let's keep on. We've got the capital budget to move with a couple of amendments. And I'll call the final question. Counsel Dennis.
I have a few questions, Mayor Bradley. First, I do want to note that council really needs to have actual historic capital spending at our fingertips for a review, not just budget numbers. I do have a motion in to request this information for our next council meeting. Second, I do have one question on the external funding. Can you tell me why the portion of external funding for capital has decreased from eighty-four percent of the total budget in two thousand and twenty-two to fifty-two percent in two thousand and twenty-three? Is there any chance this external funding forecast is low, which would free up some of our cash?
So we try to build, through the mayor to council, we try to build sustainable capital reserve. So normally, based on the last few years, we try to contribute the twelve million dollars of from operating budget to the capital, to the general capital reserves. So that's kind of a we can, it's allowed us to have a longer and larger capital investment in our communities.
Thank you. I do have a question regarding the business park competitive market analysis. My question is, what is the four hundred thousand forecast for two thousand and twenty-three going in to get us exactly? Is this another consultant report? Will it have any real, will any real action happen in two thousand and twenty-three?
Through your worship to members of council, the four hundred thousand that's projected for the first year of the business park servicing implementation is for the development pattern of the business parks, which means we could map out how the lots would be created within the park as well as where the servicing would be located within the park.
Okay, thank you. And a general question on inflation. What inflation rate for capital spending and goods and services did we assume for two thousand and twenty-three? As noted, inflation is forecast to come down through two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Based on the current, through the mayor to council, the inflation right now is a pretty high. And for the construction inflation, maybe it's higher than the kind of the engineer, general inflation. So Mr. Jackson, I think you have a number that's based on the D C study preparation. You have a sixteen percent inflation rate, if I'm right?
Yeah, through the mayor to council, so there is a, yeah, it's the, there's a construction inflation index we use, which was, I think, I mean, at the end of December was around eleven percent or around that number. And then as people develop the capital projects with the various different programs, they use a factor dependent on that project. You know, we're seeing different inflation for different types of material, different types of construction. And so they are using, you know, a best estimate based on what happened in the last year to provide some buffer for the future. And so it really depends on the individual project. But I wouldn't say there's a large kind of fluff factor in these budgets that gives us much room.
Thank you. Anything further? Counsel Gillis.
Thank you, your worship. I apologize for leaving my mic on. I would like to introduce a new capital project looking at the fact that we have a million dollars, four hundred and eighty-four, six hundred and forty-seven dollars in overpayment from the or overfunding from the province, a gift if you would. And I've noticed in the actual capital budget that there was work for Canatera Park in, by ways of study, and that's all well and good. But we also know that there is some paving that desperately needs to be made on the walkway leading from the entrance of the park to the children's farm. I don't think it would be a very large amount to do that, either shave and pave, but one would prefer it to be better than that. One would prefer it to be a multi-use trail, if it could be, or a multi-use sidewalk. But I would like to see that done. I know the number of people have come to all of us asking us to have some improvements made at Canatera Park, and I think it's doable. So I'd like to see that added into our capital budget utilizing some of this new money that we have found.
I need a value and I also need to know where that is actually coming from.
I would put a value of fifty thousand dollars.
I believe Counsel Vanderberg, you raised this a number of years ago and the cost was like three hundred thousand, was it?
Well, I raised it, your worship, and I believe Mr. Jackson told us that the cause at that time for the sidewalk to the animal farm was going to be about a hundred thousand dollars. And I recall that matter was deferred to this budget to be considered. So I'm just asking, is it in our budget to be considered?
Let's ask Mr. Jackson.
Through the mayor to council, so we are planning to do that as part of the road rehab budget. So that scope is going to be completed this year.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we've had the budget, the capital budget moved with a couple of amendments. And let me call the question then. All those in favor of the capital budget is amended. That's unanimous, thank you. Now can we deal with the requests from the Sarnia Legionnaires? I don't know if the other motion passed. I think it would be helpful for council to endorse the request, what's on the record, and we can move it forward. However, it's going to be paid for. Counsel White. Counsel Dennis. It was, I believe, one of the reports that came to you.
It's page nineteen.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, can we have a brief discussion on the reserve accounts and the reserve fund budget? Ms. Q.
Thanks, the mayor. The twenty twenty-three reserve and reserve fund balance increased from thirty-three point nine million dollars to thirty-five point four million dollars for a total increase of one point five million dollars after factoring the changes included in the updated reserve budget council report on page twenty-three. Agenda. Twenty twenty-three draft reserve and reserve fund balance is included in the capital and reserve budget book on page sixty-four to page sixty-eight.
Are there any comments or questions on that? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the recommended reserve budget. Pretty straightforward. Can I get a motion then? Counsel Vanderberg and the second Counsel Burl, any discussion? If not, I'll call the question. Those in favor?
Excuse me?
Counsel Gillis.
Thank you, your worship. I've noted that one item has been referred to budget deliberation, which is the pedestrian safety and improvement reserve fund request. The actual request was five hundred thousand dollars, but it was an arbitrary number because the person who posed this was just looking for a reserve to be created for emergency repairs to sidewalks, which is outside what we're doing from the actual scope of work. It's an emergency repairs. When I was speaking to this particular individual about this fund, he was hoping that we would create it and then build it up over time. So as a result, I would like to see twenty thousand dollars put into this reserve account. It's not a lot of money and it probably won't do very much, but it might give us an opportunity to take some money from that reserve, match it with some other capital funding that we may have in surplus and actually do some emergency work this year. It's not a lot of money, as I say, but I think it's the the need of the individual was that and the the intent of the the ask was to create a reserve fund.
Okay, so where would the money come from? So it's in the motion. Like where is the money coming from to establish this reserve? And then I have a question for Mr. Jackson.
Actually, I would suggest that we use that from some of the surplus that we know, sorry, the, yes. We do, we are running an operating budget, a surplus of two point eight, I think it was, and Ms. Chi mentioned. And that was only to Q three. That means that the final number has not come in, so we don't really know what it is. But I'm sure it's going to be, will be over well, well over three million dollars, I would assume, based on what we're seeing happening in Q one, Q two and Q three.
In the motion's direction, so count staff.
From the, from the operating surplus of twenty twenty-two.
And then to Mr. Jackson, if I recall, did you not indicate you do have access to funds when you need them for this purpose?
Through the mayor to council, so we do have our operating budget, which helps fund the repair work. And then we do have a capital budget on the transportation master plan, which we do some of this type of work. I mean, there's an endless amount of work to do, so if there's more funding, we can do more work. But yeah, we do have some funding now to do some work and we could do more if council would like.
Oh, is there any, I mean, there's no problem with another reserve or that's creating?
I, so in my mind, I don't think we need another reserve per se. The transportation master plan budget is kind of along those lines. We've historically used that more for new infrastructure, but we could, you know, use that for replacing larger sections to make it simpler from the finance perspective of tracking, if that, if that's easier.
There's a motion that's been moved and seconded to, I don't have a second here. Counsel. Counsel White. All right, any further discussion, Counsel Burl and Counsel White?
Yes, what does the current amount that we spend annually on sidewalk repaired? We have a specific budget for that, I believe, at some point.
Through the mayor to council, so it would be in the operating budget in our urban road section. Now that it's another purchaser, if I had to guess right now, I'll say, let's say a hundred thousand dollars. That's generally to do repairs where we do an excavation to replace a water line is what we're speaking of there. Right now, we don't do large sections of sidewalk replacement of poor condition sidewalk, other than if we're rebuilding a road. We don't have a separate account where we just go do that type of work. So the operating budget is used for those small repairs. The transportation master plan capital budget is used for kind of infiller new sidewalks, but we could start doing larger replacements of poor condition sidewalks with that.
Let me call the question. Those in favor of establishing this reserve?
We've lost a member. So if I could just follow up on what Mr. Jackson has said, if I understand correctly, Mr. Jackson, you're saying that a reserve dedicated to emergency repairs would be a good thing?
Through the mayor to council, staff would always like to fix more infrastructure. And so if we have more budget, we can do more work and we like to do that. It's just that balance of the budget impact.
Okay.
White.
Thank you, worship. And I do note, I think that some of the spirit of of what was asked at the presentation, at least my understanding, has been built into the budget as well. And I, and I think staff should be commended for that. I think the the premise is to make it safer for all pedestrians. And and I'd just like to highlight that there's, you know, been a significant amount of inclusion in this budget already. AODA upgrades to signaling, which has been going on for several years now. Three hundred thousand dollars for active transportation improvements plus seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allotted for the multi-use trails, benches and landscaping. I think that's all also in the spirit of of what was presented. So to highlight this reserve now for emergency repairs, I think is a great addendum to that concept, so.
A good stall. Let me call the question now. All those in favor of the question?
I may, your worship, but I, you know, to me, set up another small reserve just creates more difficulty. I mean, we do lots on streets and sidewalks and that already. I don't see the purpose for setting up another small reserve for something that, you know, we spend a lot of money on streets and already. So, I mean, even street maintenance concrete, you know, the total, you know, is eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, so on page fifty-six of the budget, so. And then there's another category, street maintenance urban, and that's another one point one million dollars. So I don't see the purpose of setting up a twenty thousand dollar reserve fund, so I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. Let me call the question. Councilor Gillis.
This is rebuttal to that. I understand exactly what you're saying. However, this is not going to be a reserve that's going to have a small amount of money in perpetuity. Certainly, if it needs more money, and we see that the need is there, then that allows us this opportunity to start and build. If it is not effective, then we also have the opportunity to take it away in the next budget, but I'd like to give it a chance.
Okay, I'll call the question. Those in favor? Councilor Dennis, Councilor Killner, Councilor McRoberts, Councilor Gillis, Councilor White, Councilor Bushy, those opposed, Councilor Burrow, Councilor Vanderburg, and myself. So that question passed. Okay, so let me then call the question on the, we do have a motion on the, on the changes to the reserve and the reserve fund budget as amended. All those in favor? That's done. Now we're going to move into the operating budget. I'll ask Ms. Q. to make a couple of remarks, but I would like a motion to approve it in principle, and then we'll go through it in sections. So I could get that motion? Councilor Burrow? Anyone else? I need a second or a proven principle. Councilor White? So thank you. Ms. Q.
Thank you, Mayor. The twenty twenties, in order to find one hundred seventy-two million dollars expenditures, the draft operating budget has been prepared with a proposed tax levy increase of four point zero one percent. There are a few proposed changes noted in the amended operating budget council report on page thirty-seven.
Okay, thank you. Page thirty-seven, in the yellow book?
No, on the agenda. So these, these changes are the result of additional two point zero one percent increase to the city portion of a property tax, for a total increase of two point four two percent, including the transit levy. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll be looking for any questions or comments to do it as we go through the sections. Go ahead.
So the majority change is the police budget. The draft one is based on the six percent increase, but the board approved eleven point five three percent of the increase. As a result, one point nine increase on our city's tax levy. So the next one is insurance, it has been decreased, so that's reduced our tax levy by point zero two, sorry, this, by point zero three percent. The Sinclair Conservation Authority budget has been increased by a significant account but, but impact on ours by increase point zero two percent. The OC funds, the Ontario Municipal Partner Fund, we, has been reduced by twenty-two, around the twenty-two thousand dollars. That's kind of reduced our, increased our tax levy by point zero three percent. The auditing fee has been increased. As a result, increased our tax levy by zero point, zero point zero one percent. The current RBC bank loan will be expired on January twenty-seventh. So based on the current market borrowing rate, this one will, the interest will be increased by forty-eight thousand dollars. As a result, will increase our tax levy by zero point zero six percent. The additional request for Andrip immunity will increase our tax levy by zero point zero three percent. So the total amount will be two point zero one percent. Thanks.
I just want to keep clarity here. We're going to move through each section? So you've given us a general overview, thank you. Are there any questions on those issues raised? Councilor Gillis?
Yes, again, the OMPF increase has now been mitigated, just so we're clear, and that it passed. So that is not, that means that the six point four two number has changed.
Sorry, just give me one moment, I will kind of check, because this is based on, through the mayor to council, right now, I just kind of update based on the current report we have, but I'm going to update where we're at right now for the tax.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chi. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm not getting any other motions or at this point?
Actually, I, I do have a question in regard to the.
Please go ahead.
Okay. On item, item six, the RBC bank loan renewal, I presume that this is the debt that we have been paying down since two thousand and five. I do have a question in regard to that, because if you recall, when we went to the Coronation Park meetings, several people wanted to know if there was a way to get some sort of a holiday from that debt repayment, which now is down to two point eight million, I believe, and is going to be retired in two thousand and twenty-six, but perhaps pushed ahead one year because of the new repayment schedule. I don't know if that is even possible, where you can pay the, only the interest, but not the principal on that, and if we could even have a tax holiday from that. But I thought, it's, people have asked for it, people are expecting something. So is that, that concept where you pay just the taxes and not, not put any money on the principal for one year? Is that possible, Ms. Chi?
Through the mayor to council, this will not permanently to decrease our tax levy. First of all, this bank loan is our liability, we have to pay interest anyway, and the current market rate is around six percent. So if we delay the payment, which means we're going to pay six percent, it's kind of a borrowing, a short-term borrowing for one year long. So that's kind of, actually, taxpayer will increase the tax levy potentially, because we have to pay six percent of the interest.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation.
Can you move us into the general section as we move forward in the book? And give us the pages, and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Mayor. So we'll go through each department budget. If there are any questions and items you wish to discuss in the pages, just stop me, and we will try to do it, if that works for you. We will start from, okay, we'll look at the draft operating budget, the yellow book.
Okay, what page in the yellow book?
Okay, we will start at page thirteen.
Page thirteen?
Page thirteen. Page thirteen to page nineteen, that is a non-departmental revenue, which include, give me one second. That's including taxation, rents, blue water power, and other revenues.
Councilor Burrow?
Yes, Your Worship, I was referring to my list here. My first recommendation for change is on page thirteen, and it is account five dash zero six one zero zero, where we are putting in six hundred thousand into reserves, and I'm suggesting we really don't need to do that. We didn't do it last year. There is in that particular reserve well over two million dollars, and it means more in years when we have an actual reassessment, which hasn't happened for a couple of years now, and I think probably, wouldn't probably need it for next year, because I understand there might be one next year for going to market value assessment changes. But I think for this year, I don't think that it's necessary, and I would move that we redo, move that six hundred thousand transferred to reserve and just not do it.
Second, there, Councilor Gillis? Any, can I have some comments from staff on that direction? What the impacts are?
Through the mayor to council, six hundred thousand dollars contributes into the reserve. As we are, we know there is a big reassessment for Lampton Mall coming in. We have two million dollars budgeted in two thousand and twenty-three in the reserve, and we need to build our budget, reserve balance to deal with this kind of reassessment. That's why we put six hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-three.
This is because of some, well, we've had this in the past, major tax appeals?
Correct.
Any other comments? All the question then, those in favor? Councilor Dennis, Killner, Roberts, Burrow, Gillis, Vanderburg, White, and Bushy, and opposed is myself. Okay, any other comments, Councilor Burrow? You had a couple of things on this list here, that section.
Page eighteen, counselor.
Yeah, you had the blue water power, the dividend.
Worship on page eighteen. With regards to the blue water power dividend annually, they have always increased it, and as you can see, from twenty-one to twenty-two, they went up over a hundred thousand. So I'm just suggesting that we include a hundred thousand this year as well, and I would so move.
Is there a second here? Councilor Gillis, is there any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, with Councilor Dennis not in, because of a conflict of interest. Okay, anything further in this area here? Get the council's attention? Okay, thank you. Councilor Burrow?
On page nineteen. And the line number five dash zero five seven oh eight. About halfway down, it's the first number under expenses. And last year, we showed a transfer of industry reserve for, we budgeted for five hundred thousand, we actually did twelve hundred, oh, sorry, one point two million. This year, we're putting it up to two point two million, and I would suggest that we could leave some of that money in the budget to help out our overall tax situation, not taking it all away, but just reducing that number of two point seven nine four, reduce it by five hundred thousand.
Is there a second for that? Okay, Councilor Bushy? Can I ask the clerk if she could speak to the increase? Okay, this transfer to reserve, okay, I'm sorry, it's the other one. Anything, anything you want to add to that?
Through the mayor to council is a viable, for the five hundred thousand dollars deduction from the contribution, the contribution to the reserve. Fine.
Ask the philosophical question then, so why is it in here? Doesn't have any impact for us. So we move it? Why did staff put it in here?
It's based on the, our current reserve policy, that any interest we earn, we need to transfer to the, to the reserve, the capital reserve.
Okay, thank you. Let me call the question. Those in favor of the change? That's unanimous, thank you. Anything you want to move forward?
Okay. So next one is corporate services department, page thirty to page forty-three.
Councilor Burrow?
Oh, no, sorry, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, skipped one department. Next department is the council and administration department, which including mayor council, chief administrative officer, economic development, city clerk, harbor, and Andrip committee. The page start from twenty to twenty-nine.
Councilor Burrow?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, on page twenty-four. The, I'm not quite sure why this is, but the overall increase in the clerk's department is up eighty-two percent. Must be some reason for that, but seems like a very big increase for some reason.
Clerk to speak to it?
Thank you. Through the mayor to council, the change is primarily to add deputy clerk back into the clerk's complement. That positions remain vacant for three years, and staff has been filling the gaps there, but it's timely to fill that, so that we can satisfy their statutory responsibilities in the clerk's office. That represents approximately a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, plus various progressions through the salary grid in the, in the.
Go ahead, and the CL wants, has some comments?
Yes, you know, I understand what you're, but it seems like we, like all the years on here, it seems to have worked without having that position. Is it possible to phase it in and add in like six months' worth, as opposed to a whole year's worth?
Yeah, I just kind of speak to it as.
Worship, through the members of council, this is, really comes down to a personnel matter, and it has to do with some statutory obligations that the clerk identified. We're coming forward because over the next, I believe, five to six years, there's going to be some obligations we're going to have to meet. I can't identify specifically in open session, because it is a personnel matter, a personals matters. And we're only coming forward because we do believe that there's going to be, there's going to be some gaps that we're going to need to fill, and it's going to be some lengthy gaps for certain reasons. And we do believe that after, you know, the five, six-year period approximately, give and take, I'm just estimating on that, that this position will be filled through attrition, and those, those numbers will, will be corrected. Even if this is not approved, there still has to be other positions that have to be filled, so it's, you want that consistency, you want that, that individual to be here. There's some heavy lifting that's coming up, obviously, in four years from now, we're also going to have another election. There is records management. There's a lot of stuff that's going on within the clerk department that we have statutory obligations that we need to meet, and I'm only coming forward because it is, it is a need. To Councilor Burrow's comment, if you're looking, or if council's wishing to mitigate some of these costs, where we bring in this body maybe at the end of Q1, beginning of Q2, we could probably work that into the timing. I'm just thinking what's going on right now with, with employees and personnels. So that can be an option. We can at least move it to, you know, Q2, to save some funding there, at least a quarter, if not maybe half, and that's pushing it.
So that the increase, instead of being a hundred and forty-seven thousand, would be, say, let's make it, say, just a hundred thousand? And well, in fact, reduce it, say, by forty thousand? Would that be reasonable?
Correct. I'll even go halfway with council and just split that in half, and we'll work within our means within that, so we can go down to seventy thousand to assist council with their, their budgeting and timing right now.
Yeah, I would then move a reduction in that department of seventy thousand.
For a second there? Councilor Bushy, any discussion? All those in favor?
I did want to ask a question, Mr. Carter.
Please go ahead then.
So, Mr. Carter, do you think that that's reasonable to reduce it by half? And the other comment I want to ask you about was, you were talking about you're going to have some issues coming up in the future, and you're talking about attrition. This is a perfect example of where we have difficulty if we attrish too much, so that we end up with nobody being able to do the work and the work piling up, coming back to our consultants. So would you consider looking into alternatives to attrition, trying to keep us within the confines of a realistic budget, so that we can start to upsize some of the departments that have been decimated over the past few years?
Worship, through the members of council, I believe the services that have been provided to date have been, have been excellent. I believe the departments are working extremely well. I don't really have any comments with respect to previous decisions that were made from previous administrators, but what I can say is that I got an excellent team. If there is concerns, I will be coming forward with council, but right now, I do not foresee any concerns. The concern that I've had is obviously presented in front of council, and I'm respectfully requesting that council really consider my request for this. really consider my request for this position. It is very, very important for the corporation. And we are trying to manage the, the employees, the, the resources and the funding as, as best as we can for the taxpayer and as per the direction of council. So right now, I don't see any concerns with respect to our day-to-day service delivery within the corporation.
Thank you, I'll call the question, those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Anything further in this section? I'm not seeing anything. So let's move on to the next section, Ms. K.
Okay. Next department is Corporate Services, page thirty to page forty-three. This department including I T, H R, Customer Service, Communication, Emergency Management, Legal and Finance.
Asking, I don't see any questions at this point. Counsel Burrow?
And yes, on page thirty-nine.
Right.
Have, again, that's kind of what was referred a little bit before, but the purchase services, we have an additional a hundred and twenty-six thousand. But the overall department, really, it seems to have gone up quite a bit for the whole, like we're adding a lot of money into this department. It's actually, if you look at the, the overall increase for the whole department, it's thirty-two percent in one year. And the only, that sort of is independent item there is kind of that other purchase services. So I'm not sure exactly what that is, but it seems to me, maybe some of the these increases can be put over two years instead of all over in one. Like, that's a lot of money to increase, and increase an apartment by a third, especially when it's a two-million-dollar department. So I would like to move that we postpone that a hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred, which is on, on page thirty-nine, about three lines up from the bottom. And we postpone that one twenty-six thousand five hundred.
Secondor? Not seeing a secondor. Counselor Dennis, Ms. K, do you want to respond to that, and explain that further, what's going on there?
Through the mayor to council, this reflects our large software implementation. And the city tried to increase, develop our efficiency to improve the red tape and look after I S S and information and others. And we are expecting to see efficiency in how we do things. And we're not looking at this as a staff reduction and, but want to do things better. That's why they have this, this increase.
There are measurable result from this, if it was to pass, if it was?
Also, this, this could have gone to software and licensing, but infrastructure is different than the software. So it could have been a new, it can be the other purchase services. So this one cannot be postponed based on the current, the software, or the existing software we have right now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Heard the explanation, I'll, I'll call the question, those in favor? Counselor Vanderburg, White, Boushee, all the right bank here. And I'm not in favor, but the question passed. Okay, moving on.
Next department is Fire Services, page forty-four to page forty-six.
Counsel Burrow, you had a question on page forty?
Well, actually, we, it was actually incorporated with thirty-nine and so on.
Okay, all right.
But thank you. I, I do have a que, I'm not, are we on page forty-eight yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I'll pass them.
We're into the Fire Department. Can you just give us a very brief, on the Capitol side, update chief on where your new fire halls at?
Through your worship to council, in the next week or so, as we close in the roof area, that will be a good indicator of where we are going to be in timelines. But as right now, budget-wise, we don't see anything indicated beyond what council has already approved.
Thank you. Anything on the fire side, I'm not seeing that, Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, your worship, through you to the chief. Is there any reason why the, the actual build has taken such a long time? A lot of people look at fire stations and think that that's not a, a difficult engineering feat to do. But the C A O has, has isolated that earlier in his discussion, that it did have some interesting features that had to be considered. So could you speak to that, because many people have asked me, why has it taken so long?
Well, as far as the length of time and Mr. Carter's previous comments, when we were discussing various services, we, we did spend about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand upfront with the design and services on that building. And that was all put into place in a good timeframe. As far as delays in time, there have been some small delays with materials, a couple unforeseen that had happened. And, and labor is, is also an issue, getting the people there on time. But again, we, we will be done, I'm hoping, by the end of summer. But the next couple of weeks will be a real telling tale of where we'll be.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, move on to the next section then?
Next one is Engineering and Operations. Start from page forty-seven to page seventy. This department including Engineering Design, Traffic Development, Construction, Public Works, Garbage Recycling, Compost Collection, and Caravan.
Counsel Burrow?
Thank you, your worship, with regards to page forty-eight. Again, overall, the, there seems to be a, quite a large increase in the program. In fact, there was no real cost to this department before, but now it's, it's five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So I'm not sure why it's gone up so much. But I would move that we try to maybe phase that in by asking for a reduction in that for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which still gives the department more money than they had last year. But it would help our overall budget. So I would move a reduction in.
For a secondor, then I'll turn to staff for an explanation, Counselor Dennis, and then can I get an explanation? Mr. Jackson?
Through a number of counselors, there's a few things happening here. So part of the reason you're seeing that large number is just a difference in how we're doing our accounting. So previously, this area was funded directly from capital projects. And so, you know, there'd be a million approved for the, in the road rehab capital budget, and we would pull, let's say, a hundred thousand of that to help contribute to staff. And so, part of the reason you see that large number is here, we've changed how we're doing that accounting. So it's not a difference in cost to the city, it's just it's funded from the operating budget now, is largely why that number is significant. The major changes on here are, last summer, we received a ten-million-dollar grant. And so, as part of our discussion about consulting services, we decided to add a position. And so we added an F T E to do those designs in-house. So that's the F T E increase. Similarly, the other, the other purchase service increase is significant. Again, largely that is just a difference in how we do accounting. So previously, for example, survey work or geotechnical work, we would often do those out of the capital budget. But some of the pre-planning work, we've now moved into the operating budget. So these costs will happen this year, they are to implement the capital program. So I would say it's not really possible to do a reduction unless we are choosing to reduce staff and not implement capital projects.
Counsel Burrow?
Well, if it used to be funded by the capital budget, why is it, why is that a change? Like, why is it now back onto the operating budget? If we're still doing capital projects, would they not be carried by the capital funding?
So through the mayor to council, if I don't cover it, Jane, you can reach in there. But so, essentially, the change doesn't, so we reduced the contribution to the capital reserve and are now instead funding it through here. So essentially, there is no change in the amount of capital work we're doing or the cost to the city. It's just really an accounting change, and Jane, you can maybe explain that better.
Okay, through the mayor to council, Mr. Jackson is correct about this description. And just in order to monitor each sub-department budget status and manage their costs, and then we decided to change in this recording cost. So at the end, there's no any impact on the tax levy.
Well, let me deal with the motion then, Counsel Burrow?
I mean, there obviously is a, an effect on the tax levy, because taxes are going up by five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So, I mean, we're still doing capital works. So I'm, I'm having trouble translating as to why we're making this shift and pushing this money onto, onto the tax levy, when it seemed to work reasonably well doing it the way we had been doing it. I don't understand the reason for the change, especially when it, it seemed like a, a big new dollars on the tax levy.
I could try one more time to explain, it is, it is complicated. But so previously, basically what we did here is, we reduced the contribution to the reserve by the same amount. So previously, this five hundred and sixty-seven thousand was going into the capital reserve, and then we'd fund our staff from the capital budgets. And so we've now reduced the contribution to capital reserve by this amount and put it into the operating. So there is no change to the tax levy, there's just a change in, the money's going right into the operating instead of funneled through the capital budget.
Oh, through the mayor to council, can I add one comment? If we look at the page one oh eight, we will see five hundred thousand dollars reduction to the capital reserve to offset the reporting change in these two departments. So there, that's why we say there's no impact on the tax levy.
Okay, well, this is.
Sorry, that's page one oh eight?
One oh eight, on the bottom, it's five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
You wish the motion to stand, Counsel Burrow?
I will eliminate that.
Okay.
On from, number, on from page forty-eight, I will remove it, thanks.
Thank you. Anything further in this section? Which page are we at now, the very end?
Right now, we just finished the Engineering Department, it's at the page seventy. So what next department is Community Services.
Counsel Burrow?
Sorry, your worship, but I did have one for page fifty-one. And fifty-one is, it's up two hundred thousand dollars. And I'm assuming it's basically the same kind of explanation, but we've already given you the five hundred. So I think we should take something back here. So I would move the hundred thousand dollar reduction on page fifty-one.
For a secondor for that, Counselor Gillis, any discussion? And get an explanation from staff or council?
This is exactly as Mr. Jackson and I just explained, this is same situation as the department design. We just changing the reporting format and in order to keep track their cost. There's no impact on the tax levy, as we offset five hundred thousand dollars reduction from operating to capital reserve.
Let me call the question, those in favor? Counselor Dennis, Counsel Burrow, Counsel Boushee, and Counselor Gillis, those opposed. Counsel Vanderburg, White, Roberts, and Kilner, and I'll break the tie to defeat the motion. Hey, let's move to the next section. I voted to defeat the motion.
Next department is Community Services. Start page seventy-one to page one oh nine. This department including Parks, Facilities, Buildings, Planning, Bylaw and Property Maintenance.
Are there any questions in that area? Not seeing it. Counsel Burrow?
Yes, your worship, rather, again, it may just maybe the way they're shifting the reporting, but there's a, on page seventy-one, we do have a two hundred and sixty-six percent increase in the cost to that department. So I'm not quite sure why. Last year, the budget was for a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, and now we're up to four fifty-four.
Or Barry, you want to speak to that?
Through your worship to members of council, I'll let Jane help me articulate this clearly. There's a quick note at the bottom there, but salaries and benefits, again, it goes back to how it's being reported. So there has been a shifting of a, of a dedicated capital position and property position. So it was, it was pulled out of the Parks Administration team and put here. And there was a splitting of some of the management positions, given the areas that they cover in the city. So again, it's just a consolidation of funding from different areas. But it does show as a significant increase, but it's overall, it's, it's the same positions that we've had, just a moving around of how they're being reported.
Okay, was, sorry, was that reported to council, or is this, it was just going to be dealt with a budget?
It was, through your worship to members of council, it's really through budget, it's an internal allocation of the salary plan. So it's the same position, same budgeting, but it's moved around, so it's reflective more of the organizational changes.
And I'll just say to Mr. Carter, that might be something in the future, just that's identified to us. So we understand that it is an internal, it saves you some time, it saves us some time too. Okay, well, thank you, anything further?
Very, so, again, is this another one of these, overall, it's just a shuffling the deck chairs on the Titanic kind of thing?
Through your worship to members of council, that's a great explanation.
We might prefer a different comparable. Yeah, but I think it is part of you just, you know, so it's a good question to raising, but just if that is an internal thing and there's really no impact, it would be helpful for us to know that. Thank you. Anything further? If not, I was going to call the break, ten-minute break, before we got to the, the police budget. You're there, there?
Yep.
Okay, ten-minute break, and we'll reconvene at twenty-five to eleven. Thanks, everyone.
The meeting and continue the budget deliberations. We're doing well, we're on track. And it's a learning experience for the two new members, just going through this. And it's going well. I appreciate the treasurer's work there and the other staff. So, the budget that's up now is the police services. If you wish to speak to it.
Next department is other debt charges and unclassified financials. Page 10 to page 11.
Okay. Are there any questions in that area? Say that again, please, which page is?
Page 10. Oh, 110, I'm sorry, 110 to 111.
Okay, are there any questions in that area? I'm not seeing any, so let's just move to the police budget. Okay, sorry. Give everyone a chance here to get caught up.
110 to 111.
Yes, Your Worship. With regards to what we traditionally have done, and I'm assuming we're going to be doing the same thing. When we lower the debt charges, like, sorry, when we make the debt charges, we don't eliminate that from the budget, we then add that into our reserves to look after capital. And that's continuing, I'm assuming?
Through the mayor to council is correct. We, any retired debt will put back into the capital reserve to build their balance.
Thank you.
All right, anything further in this area? I'm not seeing anything. So can we move to the police budget then?
Next one is the police service department from page 112 to 122.
Any questions, motions? I have, sorry, Counselor White, I had a question, just on a technical side.
Thank you, Your Worship. I know this is a difficult conversation. I want to thank my colleagues today for the work so far in trying to reduce the burden on everyday rate payers and residents of the community. I think one thing that's become very clear, if we look back at the presentation from Chief Davis, is that there's a forecasted need in certain items that were omitted from this year's police budget to try and mitigate the levy burden for 2023. However, one of those items is a K-9 officer. That was omitted from this year's budget, and I did have a brief discussion with the chief in regards to potential next priorities. And I think, I don't want to identify too specifically, but if we all recognize the last couple of weeks in this community and how difficult it was with police resources, how strenuous it was on folks, and obviously how serious the matters, the matter was, I think it's very clear that we need to move forward with the K-9 officer. I think that could have potentially saved a lot of resources that were spent, and perhaps found us closer to a positive outcome. The cost for that, as noted in Chief Davis's presentation from December 12th, was $143,673 for the officer, not including equipment or dog. I move that we add $143,673 to the police budget for the purpose of recruiting a K-9 officer, in the hopes that being ready will allow them to find the resources to come up with the additional money required for the equipment or the dog.
Is there a second for that? Counselor McRoberts. Just a question to the counselor. You know, we did have one, and we eliminated that position. It was not cost-effective, and it actually wasn't, it wasn't just cost-effective, it wasn't particularly effective for policing. And we signed an agreement with the OPP. And if we need the dog, we call in the OPP. So I'm just surprised this would be added in. And I just want to make a general comment, because last year or two has not been pleasant on the police board, is that we've always had a balance of the city's needs and the police need. And I understand where you're coming from in this, but this is, this budget is going to just repeat itself year after year after year. And you're going to have to go in, well, you can't go to reserves next year, you're going to have to go back in time and time again. And even now, I'm getting rumblings about another OPP costing. So, you know, there's a couple of things that need to happen, and I also have to, that's my technical question. Normally, we got a full budget, including the overtime. We don't get that anymore. We're not getting that this year. And I don't think staff got all the questions answered that they wanted. So there's some substantial issues here about the interaction between the police service and the city, and the lack of concern about the impacts on the rest of the city budget. And that, that's what worries me, Counselor White, down the road. This is not just this year's budget. And you know, and I think Counselor Bushy and I were both willing to live with a seven or eight percent increase despite the percentage, but not the number that we've got. And to add into it, I just personally cannot support the motion. Other comments before, on this particular request to increase the budget? Counselor Burrow?
Yes, sort of to a certain extent reflecting what you're saying there, I don't see why we're increasing the budget. I mean, they're asking for an 11 and a half percent. It seems to me that they did not look at their existing budget, they just took, well, we had this budget last year, let's add to it. Well, there's a whole science of budgeting called zero-based budgeting, where you go in and you justify everything in a budget, and you would expect that when there's a sort of a change in regimes, that that would be done. Because not everything in anybody's budget, whether it's your own home budget, or a police budget, or the city budget, nothing is 100% efficient in the prior year. So it should have all been looked at, but it seems to me the effort that was put forward was, the effort was in marketing as opposed to in budgeting. And I'm not going to support an increase, and in fact, I will be supporting decreases in the police services budget, because I don't think it's a responsible budget that was presented to us.
We're dealing with the amendment, so this is to increase the budget. Let me call the question, those in favor. Counselor Vanderburg, White, Roberts, those opposed. That is the rest of us, including myself. Okay, so dealing with the main issue here. I can call the vote now, if anyone else wishes to speak. Counselor Bushy?
Your Worship, I, I'm willing to make a compromise regarding the police budget, and add 2% on top of the 6% we have in the budget, to a total of 80%. This is my motion, is for the police budget to be 8%.
Is there a second for that? Counselor Burrow, discussion?
Can I speak on it? Judging from the people that I talked to, and the people who wrote me, actually, there's some for it, but the majority that I got is that they're against the 11 and a half I have nothing but respect for our police force, and a record showed that when we tried to go to the OPP, my wife and I came up with thousands of petitions against it, and eventually I had, I had, I had a support, big support, to keep the police, the police officers in place. So I have nothing but, I love them, and I, and I grow, I grown up to be supporting for the police, but the, the things, inflation is growing, the interest rate is up, the people are suffering, and, and the percent of 8% to the police budget, considering we have had 4% all along for them, as long as I remember, and to give them 11 and a half percent is really, it is the first time in the history of Sarnia. It's not fair for the people who are suffering, they, they can't afford to buy groceries for their families and children. So I think the 8% is a good compromise, and, and I hope that we all get together and vote for it and move on.
For the newer members, and this has happened many times, if by chance this motion passed, it would go back to the board, and then they would deal with the, what possible changes they can make. So that would be the next if it passed. So any other speakers before I call the question? Counselor White?
Thank you, Mayor Bradley. I, I think it would be unfair to call it marketing. I attended a number of the public meetings. They were very engaging meetings. The public, I believe, was heard loud and clear as to what the priorities are in our community. Counselor Bushy's right, people are suffering. And I understand the difficult position that we're in to try and balance what level of suffering is acceptable versus what level of suffering we should attempt to mitigate. But the reality is, people in this community are living in fear, they're witnessing things that they shouldn't have to witness, and on the other side of that same coin, there are people that are engaged in activities that, given the proper resources, I have no doubt would choose differently. And they're suffering as well, in different ways. This is really a 2.76% increase based on everything that's been shared with us, the previous 8% was previously committed. So in fact, this is 2.6% of an increase on top of what was previously committed to move forward. So capping it at, excuse me, an 8% increase would not effectively get us moving forward in any way from the direction that was already, the service was already heading. I think for that 2.76%, when we look at the chart and what's included in that, we've got a significant shift in priorities with our policing, that treats human beings like human beings, that attends to mental health, that also follows what is understood to be a fairly deep dive into the organizational structure of, of the business that is occurring within that building. And I asked the question of Chief Davis, he made it very clear that business is different, that they're reorganizing things in that building, and they're trying to do things as efficiently as possible and create a modern police force. I think it's unfortunate, we're suffering no matter what we do here, but if we want a modern police force that actually starts to address the issues that we're all seeing, then we have no choice but to support the budget as presented, and I will be voting against the current amendment.
As Chair of the Board, if I can speak to this. And no one has spent more time on police budgets than defending the police over 34 years. And yet, myself and my colleague voted against the budget, because, and again, Counselor White, I respect what you're saying. And it was the former Board and Chief, and the Chief that's in the audience today, that brought about the My Heart program. That didn't start in the last six months, also led to the hiring of four new officers, which hadn't happened in quite some time. So, you know, I guess where I'm having some difficulty about creating a modern police force. We have a modern police force, and we have some incredible men and women that work there and in the civilian side. And again, you know, and I'll figure out my future on this, is that normally as Chair, I'd be up here, yes, and I've swallowed some police increases that were difficult, but in this case, I still think you give a level of service, and I'm really concerned about the spending in the future. So, you know, again, I respect this, it's an emotional debate, it's a difficult one. But let's just move forward and do the vote, and move from there. Counselor Burrow, and then I'll call the question.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Yes, you know, my suggestion was to take it to 9.7%, and, but I'm certainly willing to support the motion. That seems to be supported by the two members we have on the board, who have been on there for many years. You know, I think we've had a good police force, and we have a good police force, and to think that all of a sudden it's been invented in the last six to nine months is, you know, I think it's unfortunate to look at it that way. I think that every part of the city has to be responsible within its own budget, and for one group to somehow think that, that by marketing that, oh, it's only a 2% increase. No, it's not, it's 11.53% increase. And if some things were built into the budget, well, then it's a matter of reorienting those assets to accomplish what you want to do. It's not just add-on, 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 because there are other priorities in the community beyond policing, and to only just come up with basically saying, well, that's the most important, and well, it's not. I think every department, we could give 11 and a half percent to every department, and I'm sure they could find ways to spend it and spend it wisely. But there is a certain amount of esprit de corps you have to have, you have to work with the other groups, and I don't see the police working with the other departments within the city to try and have an overall goal of getting things done. So I think it would be very unwise to reward a request for 11.53%. So I will be supporting Counselor Bushy's motion.
I've got Counselor Gillis, and I'll call the question.
Thank you, Your Worship. As a person who brought forward the OPP costing and pushed for it and got it, to determine, and the whole point of it was to determine if it was cheaper to go with the OPP and have a better service than have a standalone. And the resounding conclusion of the OPP study was that it wasn't. There wasn't enough money being saved, and the majority of peoples that live in the city did not want OPP. That came through to me loud and clear, and I've done it once, and I will never do it again. Because the turmoil that it causes, both with the officers and with the people in the city, it's just not worth it. What they did say was, they wanted a good police service, and they do have a good police service. But I would question that they don't have a modern police services, able to deal with what we are dealing with and seeing every day. I personally had some incidences happen over the past two years, that I, it shook me to the core. And my husband, to the core. We've never seen anything like it, and never been assaulted in such a way that, it was just unbelievable. Luckily for us, we contacted the police right away, we had the wherewithal, and it took us a moment, I have to say, because we just couldn't, and we couldn't absorb what we were seeing and experiencing. We called the police, they came, and then they had, because of an escalation, they had to call some more. And I have heard over and over and over again, that there's not enough police on, on, on the street for people in the city of Sarnia to feel safe. They don't feel safe. So I will not be supporting the motion that's on the floor.
Let me call the question, ask the clerk to record the question, which is, give us the motion too, please.
Thank you. The motion is that council approve an 8% increase to the police budget.
Seconded, and I'll start the call here. See if I can make this device work. Counselor Bushy, you haven't voted. I'll take, I'll take your verbal, you obviously support the motion, you moved it. So the motion is defeated. Let me deal with the police budget, and record this vote too, as requested. Those in favor? Do the question again. Yeah, I'm going to, at least on this one, it's better if Counselor Killner records it. So I need a mover and second for on the police budget. Counselor White and Counselor Dennis, and now I'll ask you to vote. We're waiting for, or I can, there's one reason I didn't want this in the first place. This is to approve the 11 to 12%. Your motion's dealt with, and it was defeated, so now we're just dealing with the budget Counselor Bushy, I need you to vote. And everyone else. So I presume, based on your previous vote, you would vote against this motion. Oh, you are in favor. Okay. So the motion passes, that's fine. Can I suggest a motion to council that we ask for next year's budget? There'll be no in-camera discussions of the police budget, not for council, but for the board, and also, we receive the full budget. There's nothing in this budget that tells you the overtime, which is huge to deal with on a financial basis. So I just think we should go back and get a full police budget like we used to. Okay, I have you recorded on this motion, isn't it? Okay, but I have you recorded as voting for the overall increase. The 12% or so, 11% or whatever it is. Okay, so I've just proposed a motion, we ask for full disclosure on the police budget, there'll be no in-camera discussions on the police budget at the board or here, and we just put that request to the board. Thank you, Counselor Burrow, seconded. Oh, no, that's fine, Counselor Killner, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, Ms. Greif, take the next one.
Next department, sorry.
Grants?
It's not done yet. This next department is a transit.
I'm sorry, which one?
Transit department.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Page 123 to page 129.
Are there any questions on transit, Counselor Burrow?
Yes, Your Worship. On page 129, there's a gas transit subsidy tax credit. I'm suggesting we transfer 200,000 from the account in the reserves on page 64. Account 6020 gas tax reserves. It was, it's growing from 2 million to 2.3 million, and I'm suggesting that we transfer 200,000 of that to help support the transit system.
Is there a second for that? Counselor Dennis? Can I ask what, how that, what that does?
Mr. Jackson has some comment about this change.
Through the matter of council, so that funding would be used for capital. The reason it's growing this year is because we held off purchasing buses this year as we're exploring electric, so that if we switch it over to operating, would reduce the amount we have available for capital in the future, but there's no immediate impact, and we'd address that, I guess, for future capital budgets.
Yes, but it is available for, we can use it for transit operations.
Yes, we could choose to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, the motions be moved and seconded. All those in favor? I've got Counselor Gillis, Counselor Vanderburg, Counselor Burrow, Counselor Killner, Counselor Dennis, myself, opposed, Counselor McRoberts, and Counselor White. So that question passed. Anything further on transit? Not seeing it, okay.
Next department is sewer and water, on page 130, 30 to page 148.
Okay, any questions, comments, Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Your Worship. Mine is basically an overall, but I did want to, if we go to page 140 of the budget book, the actual book, we see the sewer surcharge is going up substantially. And I know that you've probably had many, many calls to individuals with regard to the water rates and how they, how exorbitant they are right now, and how they're having difficulty absorbing any more costs on that. I need, I would like an explanation as to why the increase is being asked for. I do understand that some of the work is going to be directed to the, I always get this wrong, not the separation, but the actual sewer separation project, but the stormwater management operations. And we've seen that need exacerbated by what happened in Coronation Park. So is that part of the determination for the increase that you're asking for, Mr. Jackson?
Through the matter of council, so we completed a rate study a couple of years ago, which identified that our residential rates were well below average, our commercial, industrial, and institutional rates were some of the lowest in the province. So that's part of the justification for the increase, is we are charging less than around the rest of the province. And the focus on the sewer surcharge is largely allocated to increasing capital spending, which, you know, we are eager to do to start addressing some of these larger flooding concerns that we have around the city. So again, you know, recognize that the cost is significant, you know, based on, on what happened in the last year, staff are very eager to spend more money on capital infrastructure related to sewer work, and that's why we're proposing the increase.
To your point, and just as a rebuttal, I'm sorry, I'm not really interested in how much they are paying outside of Sarnia, historically or otherwise, because we live in Sarnia, and people have noticed a huge increase, and also don't understand the whole concept of the, I'm using this much gallons per unit, but I'm paying this much. It's so, so out of whack, people just don't get it. And to ask them to even, to absorb even more based on the fact that we're not up to the level that everybody else is, is, I can't, I can't tell that to people, I can't sell that.
Okay, I've got Counselor Dennis with a second. If I could, I mean, this issue's been here for a while, and maybe that's part of the educational process, but people are paying for the whole system. They're not paying for their, you know, you know this, the water they're using, the sewer. It is that whole infrastructure that needs to be paid for day in, day out. And I understand totally, because it's a hard thing to explain to people, you know, on their, on their usage, but it's the whole system needs to be paid for. And we were actually ordered to do that by the province, to have full cost recovery on our, on our costs. So maybe that's part of what we need to tell people a bit better. Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor Bradley. We need to be very aware of the impact of this proposed water sewer draft budget on the average residential customer. Although the fixed rate is going down by a dollar six to 250, for the average residential customer, the variable charges are going up by over 30%. According to my calculations, this means our typical this means our typical average use, user, residential customer with a five-eighth meter will pay almost ten percent more. I cannot support a ten percent increase for water bills for citizens, let alone the potential impact to our businesses and large customers. I would like to know how much more our largest water customers would pay. I would suggest this number would be huge. I believe we need to mitigate this increase by us, by eliminating the proposed transfer to reserves for water sewage, and further absorb more through reserves to reduce the impact to approximately three and a half percent. I noted the sewer reserve stabilization account has a balance of approximately one-point-four million. A ten percent water and sewer increase is not reasonable in my mind and needs to be changed, and I'm happy to make a motion to that effect. Thank you.
And then I'm looking for direction in that particular area. There's a seconder for that. And then I would come back to the question to Mr. Jackson. What are the plans for this money in the year ahead? Is this part of what's going on in Coronation, Sherwood Village? What, what are the plans if this increase goes ahead?
Through the mayor to council. So again, the large portion of that increase is to increase more funding for capital spending, which is the funding we need to address flooding issues. And so if we reduce the capital spending, we would do less improvement projects to reduce flooding risk.
So Council Dennis, you want to move your motion? I'll get it on the floor. Is there a seconder? Council Gillis, any further discussion?
Sorry, yeah. What is the effect of that? Like what, what are we talking about in terms of overall dollars?
Can we get the motion repeater, the proposed reduction?
Yeah, I, I believe that we need to mitigate the, this increase by eliminating the proposed transfer to, to reserves for water sewer, and further absorb more through reserves to reduce the impact to approximately three and a half percent. I noted the sewer reserve stabilization, stabilization account has a balance of one-point-four million. A ten percent water increase is not reasonable in my mind and needs to be changed.
Hey, I'll call the question.
I don't know what the effect is. Like what dollars are we?
Sure, that's fair. Mr. Jackson, can you?
I think we'd ask that Jane, I mean, I think, do we need some time to calculate those numbers, I think?
Yeah, Mr. Jackson is correct. We need a time to calculate based on the dollars, you know, proposed.
Okay, well, why don't we, we'll keep going on the budget then. Can you do that today?
Uh.
I recognize it's pretty complicated, so.
I think our finance staff said we needed to verify the question. What's the kind of the total amount of a dollar water needed to be reduced, or the percentage needed to be reduced for water or sewer? We just need a clarification in order to give accurate.
Council Dennis, can you clarify your motion, exactly what it is?
Basically, reduce it from ten percent to three and a half percent. And, and with respect to pull out or use one-point-four from million from reserves to bring it down, help bring it down.
Just making sure the clerk's got that. Is that, you're not, you're still not?
Worship, through the mayor to council, can I just ask clarification? So, Council, just to be clear, you want to reduce it by six-point-five percent? Is that, yeah, you want to reduce it down to three, three-point-five, so from ten percent down to three-point-five, so six percent subsidy, and then find the subsidy through the reserve account to offset that six-point-five percent? Is that what I'm, what I'm getting? So Jane, do you know?
Okay, we, through the council, through the mayor to council, we, the financial staff, it, it needs time to calculate the final rate based on this.
But this is not going to impact the levy?
It will not affect general tax levy, will affect water and sewer rates.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll call the question, see if it passes, and if it doesn't, that answers the question. If it does pass, then I guess we'll have to deal with it maybe next Monday.
Sure.
Worship?
Right.
If I may get clarification as well. We're, we're looking at using the sewer rate stabilization reserve and the water rate stabilization reserve, or just one or the other?
I wasn't totally clear. That's like Council White, good questions. Which, which reserve?
The sewer reserve.
Okay. And, and, sorry, follow-up on that. And perhaps you don't have the answer, because I, I'm guessing that that's where we're at. The one point, what is it, three, almost one-point-four, but it's one-point-three-seven million dollars. Will that cover the six-and-a-half percent decrease?
Through the mayor to council, we need time to calculate the, the consequence.
Let's see if the question passes. If it does, then I guess we will deal with it as, as a future council meeting.
Correct. Your worship, may I ask the director, can you confirm if we can find an approximate amount between now and when we're done budget? Because if the mayor, as he stated, if we can just defer this until time for staff to, to calculate an approximate number, do we, can we quickly do that? If we don't mind and move on to another topic, can we revisit this?
Yeah, we'll take a quick check. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Where are we at? We should be able to get a general idea, because it's significant.
Mayor Bradley, if, if I'm, if my colleague is open to suggestions, would it be appropriate to, since there's one point, one million three-hundred-seventy-one-thousand-four-hundred-fifty-two dollars in there, to determine a maximum amount that we're willing to take out of that reserve, in whichever number is up to?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. It'd be a lot easier to just have a number, you apply it, and see the impacts later. One reason why it's helpful, the council would file some of these motions ahead of time, so we can have the people prepared to respond.
Through the mayor to council, I still want to see, want to make a clarification. It's one-point-four million dollars for the sewer reserve stabilization account. Council, Council, Councilor Dennis, can I know which page, number, from which budget book?
I, I, yeah. I can answer that. It's in the, in the reserve booklet. It's page fifty-seven. The line is sixty-five ninety, sewer rate stabilization. Opening balance is one million three-hundred-seventy-one-thousand-four-hundred-fifty-two.
Thank you. Council, Council White?
I tell you, I tell you what, why don't we, I'll just hold on the motion for the time being. Let's move into the municipal grant allocation, and then I'll come back and get the motion back on the floor, get you a bit of time. On the grants, what we've done in the past is, I will need, at least as chair, would want specific motions to put something into that allocation of funds, not just move them as a group. So can I ask if there are particular, in these, whatever it is, six, seven, eight items here, that you?
Give us the eight you're on.
Sure. Actually, fifty-three of one-twenty-four. So maybe what I'll do, just to make it simple, is I'll just call out the, the grant number, name, and wait to see if I get a motion, and if I don't, I go to the next one. And the first is the Arthritis Society of Canada. Council Vanderburgh, you're moving there. Is there a seconder for that? Council McRoberts? And I'll simply call the question then.
Can I just ask?
Sure.
So which ones of these were funded last year, and what is new money?
Well, definitely the physician one was.
Sir?
Last year is only eighty thousand dollars. It's fun for the Blue Coast Primary Care recruitment and the retention. And this year, this, they're, most of them are new.
Yeah, all these new ones, and I want to come back and talk about the council in this in a minute. All these are new requests, besides physician recruitment. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Council Kilner?
I guess my question on, on these is, when I was thinking about that eighty thousand, I don't know what the typical approach is, but, sorry, thank you, your worship. I didn't say that to open up. But I wondered, do we go through all of these, if they're all worthy? Do we go one by one? Can we prorate, if each of the requests are worthy, prorate them to the eighty thousand dollars? Or, does that make sense?
It, it does. I'm just going to suggest, although, if, if we had motions on something, well, I do. I think Council Vanderburgh was moving the Arthritis Society, and if that passes or fails, we'll move to the next one. So I will go through the list. But I do want to come back on a bigger question, which has been on councils for a few times. But, okay, let, can we deal, does that make sense to you? We'll deal with the Arthritis Society first?
Sure, sure, that's, that's fine. I, I was just concerned about the amount being limited to eighty thousand dollars. So I, I just wondered if we thought each one, like, we're going to hit eighty thousand very quickly.
If I can give you the quick summary, it's based on history. And when I first arrived in this place, we gave out forty grants, and we decided, no, these groups can survive without us, and most of them have. The only one that's been a constant is the Blue, the Blue Coast Physician Recruitment. And, you know, does Sarnia want to be into it being a granting group? I'm not talking about physician recruitment, I'm just talking about these others. And the county has done the same thing. And the issue I will raise with you right now, and it's the same in the county, we have a policy. We do not fund operating. Physician recruitment was grandfather. We don't fund operating, yet the grants that are coming in are for operating. So the debate and the discussion we had with the clerk and the finance person, if you don't meet the criteria, should you even be on the floor? In other words, if it's not capital, should we even look at the request? Because our policy is no, and this was after a long and lengthy debate at council, and a good one. So I think we need to reaffirm that. Like, I think for next budget, if, if you don't meet the capital requirement, then you don't get on the floor. That's not helping you with your question right now, though. So, so let's go through them, and, you know, it's not a long list. The Arthritis Society, there's been a motion moved. Is there a seconder? Okay, so, Council McRoberts, I will call the question. Those in favor? Those opposed? That is not passed. The Blue Coast Primary Care, which is physician recruitment? Council Dennis, Council Gillis?
Thank you, your worship. There's, I have to say, I was never in favor of, of the recruitment and retention committee. Not committee, sorry, but the grant that we were giving to them. And the reason was, because we were the only ones left in a group of municipalities that had got together originally to make this happen. But there was a significant difference this time. When they came to the table, they also told us that they are going to also be receiving monies from Point Edward. So that means it's not just us that they're depending on. From my perspective, that's a step forward. And it is something that we do need. The money hasn't changed, even though the costs, of course, have gone up. But it's been very, very worthwhile, and I think it matches all our grant requirements. And it's something that we vitally need, particularly in our city, when we have an aging population and we're losing so many physicians.
Thank you, Council Dennis, and I'll call the question.
And quite honestly, they're doing a great job. Like, they're really producing, they're really producing results. And from what I understand, when she was presenting, I think Lampton Chores has jumped on now too as well.
You're right.
So they're, they're really doing well. I think it's money well spent, myself.
Well, perhaps as maybe a friendly amendment, you might want to consider asking St. Clair Township in Lampton, Wyoming to support our generous donation. Council Burrow?
Yes. Pardon me, I'd just like to, if it's needed as an amendment, that we make the eighty thousand for the full four years of the term, because we've been funding this for years and years, and every year it's a grind, so.
Yeah, that's more in order, and it makes sense, because it has, it's been, every year, they don't know what's happening.
And then I'll also add the fact that we request other municipalities in Lampton County to participate also.
And the CEO was saying, he was going, I'll just take it as a motion, as part of that, that's fine with you guys. And the CEO said he was going to recommend that too. It did go to the county about a term or two ago, and we just couldn't get any traction. You know, Petroy wasn't interested, because they've got their own very good efforts. But I think we should ask the other communities around us to support this. So, we'll take that as a motion. Everyone's in agreement on that. All in favor? That's unanimous. The Literacy and Lampton Organizations asking for fourteen thousand dollars. I'm not seeing a mover or a seconder. The Civic Lab, the Lampton College, I guess the question I had on that one, I'll see if there's any motions. I'm seeing any motions. And the one was the last one that came in, Lampton Farm Safety.
I will move Farm Safety.
Second to Council Gillis?
It's not a lot of money.
All those in favor? So I'm.
Sorry, who made that?
Okay. That'll be part of the motion. Okay, so that's what we've got on the grant side. And the last thing that's on the agenda here is the request from the developer of Skits for, I guess, development charges relief. And I need a motion, otherwise we'll move on. Council Gillis?
I approved, or I asked that we move the recommendation, but I would like to make a comment if I could.
And the recommendation is?
I'm sorry, am I on the, the draft? Am I on the right one? The development charges grant that was asked.
Did it be denied?
Yes, that it be denied.
Thank you.
But I would like to speak to it if there's a seconder.
Sure. Council Kilner is seconded, so go ahead.
I think you worship. Obviously, development charges is something that we're going to have to be talking about more and more, as, especially when the province is making so, so many pivotal changes. But also because we are looking to revitalize certain areas of our, of our city, and we want to have a really good discussion to make some accommodation for, for developers who are going either to, dare I say, virgin land, as opposed to redeveloping an existing site. So there has to be something in there to allow that to happen. Granting? No. But there has to be perhaps another bylaw written, perhaps a redesignation of some properties. But we need to have that discussion, because we want to be clear to people what we, what our expectations are when they come to town with their money in their pocket, looking to develop. So I move this, even though there is still a discussion that will occur on January sixteenth, following up on what the complaint was asking for. So I feel comfortable doing this at this point in time, but we need that discussion on January sixteenth.
Thank you. Council Bushy, then I'll call the question.
And this was brought up. I, I, I went over the report a couple of times. I was confused myself. And I said at the time, maybe we should go seal, you know, get an opinion from lawyers. If the same position came up again, I think we should have, before any policies established, positive that we know where we're going, then I think we should get the, the report from, from our lawyer or outside lawyer. Because the, the people who applied, and they, they spent money on their lawyers and everything, didn't come out. They, they deserve an answer right from the beginning.
Fair enough. But let me call the question, which is to follow the legal advice and to deny the request. Those in favor? Burrow, Council Kilner?
That's in favor of the motion to defeat, right?
Deny.
Deny, yeah.
With, with clarification, that we will be discussing this on January the sixteenth.
I need, I need some clarification on that, because this is a request to this meeting. Clerk?
Through the mayor to council, right now, we're dealing with a request from the developer associated with two-seventy-five Wellington Street and one-forty-five Mitten Street. Seven-twenty Divine Street is what we'll be discussing at Monday's meeting, which is a complaint under the Development Charges Act, which is separate from this grant request.
True, but it's in the same theme.
This is a specific request in form of today, which is to deny those in favor of the resolution, which is to deny the request. Yeah, hands, let's see, who's in favor? Council Kilner, Council, I'm gonna, okay, I need some help here. Council Gillis, Council White, Council Bushy, myself, Council Burrow, Council McRoberts, Council Kilner. Those in favor of giving the grant. Council Vanderburgh and Council Dennis. So the motion is defeated. Fees for service. I understand there's no changes in this particular document. So could I get a motion on the fees for service or questions? Council Gillis, Council Dennis? Moving it? Any questions on fees for services? Council Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor Bradley. I have asked the- I have asked this in previous years, and I will ask again, with respect to our fees for service, do we know if they are competitive with our neighboring or similar municipalities? If we do not know this information, I do think it would be useful to have a look to it, to see where we might be too low or too high. We need to be competitive in such areas as arena fees, but also no point leaving money on the table. Given I have recently learned about the legionnaires paying some of the highest arena fees in Ontario, I think a fees for service comparison would be helpful. If staff, if staff could prepare that, I'd be certainly very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd need a motion on that for a report. Counselor Gillis, those in favor? That's done.
Is that for every fee, or is that just certain ones that were?
Good point. Counselor Dennis? Because all, a lot of the fees are just dog licenses, you know, like they're simple charges. Or do you want to make it specific to the legionnaire one?
Oh, no. I'm going to hire you as my accountant, Terry.
Well, why don't we do it this way, Counselor Dennis, I'll give you some think time. You could bring that motion to a future meeting.
Sure.
Because it's not immediate today. And I'll take as a notice of motion for a future meeting. Okay, so all is in favor of the fees for service booklet? Everyone in the favor, if you, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, can you give us an update on where we're at on the levy? This is the very end of the book. And I will ask for the update on the levy, and I might give you about a five-minute break, and then we'll come back, and if you want to move forward and pass the bylaws.
Okay.
Then the wrap-up motion will be to approve all the budgets as amended.
Through the mayor to council, the updated tax levy is a four point one nine percent. Plus, the transit levy increase is a four point, four point four eight percent.
Hey, can I make a suggestion to count? You could pass this in principle, but ask Mr. Carter to come back with some suggestions, because I think that's still too high for this climate we're in. And if you don't want to do that, we can approve the budget today. It's up to you. So do you want me to get, Counselor Dennis?
I, I move that we.
Yeah, so what I would suggest is you approve the budgets in principle, and we, because I know, the treasurer told me you've got some technical issues on tax bills and things like that. So we could deal with that next, next Monday. And Mr. Carter, I'm sure you need a bit better direction than that.
I get, Worship, through the members of council, I, I get the flavor of what council's asking of, of myself, and I'll report back. I do believe there are some efficiencies that we could look at. Again, it might just be taking a certain project and moving it down the road. However, I will report back with further recommendations for council.
So is council good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's put that, Counselor Killner?
I was just going to second Counselor Dennis's motion.
Okay, thank you. And, and so let's do that for the record, so it's on the record for, and we'll get this back. And if we can't get it back for the sixteenth, we could.
Worship, through the members of council, I, I believe we can get something on for the sixteenth.
Okay, appreciate that.
As, as quick as possible.
Okay, all those in favor? Counselor Dennis?
Other years, we've taken money from reserves just to levy roughly by one point two six. Always that avenue too as well.
There is, but I think you need to have that come back to you, because we've been told many times our reserves are, you know, they look big, but they're not, you know, so, and they're functional. So that would be an option, that's a good one, to come back and discuss. So, and what I probably would do is, well, we'll work out the technical timing on it. So let me call the question. All those in favor? That's unanimous. And now the, now, Counselor Burrow, I believe, and McRoberts, you get the honor of moving the bylaws. You get the honor, and seconded by Counselor, bylaws one to four, as printed, be introduced for the first and second reading thereof, and be taken as read for the first and second time.
I move that the bylaws, number one through four, printed, be introduced for the first and second reading thereof, and be taken and read for the first and second time.
Sorry, the referee here has just called a timeout on me. We have to wait till Monday to do the bylaws.
Oh.
That's why we have a clerk here. So what I would look for is the most favorite motion in any meeting, a German. Everyone, I got a seconder, Counselor Gillis has moved a seconder, is Counselor Bucci, all in favor? Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the staff for this good first budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.